Call the meeting to order, welcome everyone. Call the meeting to order at 6:03. Our April 10th meeting where we have our public hearing of the budget as well as our regular meeting for the Board of Education. So we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go, Hall, Dee Dee, thank you.
Kate Bult, Vermont.
Present. Welcome guests. Thank you, Jack. I guess it's a good, a good time to give a moment of silence for past, recently passed board members, Karen Anderson and Flo Harmon. Yes.
Are you waiting for me? I have to turn on an app here. I'm sorry, but I'm getting a, I'm getting an echo in the room, okay? So, you know, I've tried making an adjustment, but so I...
We're not waiting for you, but do you need us to wait? Do you need us to wait?
No, I'm all set because now I have voice to text that I can follow any questions. I appreciate your understanding and, you know, we can, we can work with that, okay? Budget?
Yes, we'll move to budget.
Okay. Erica, did you get one that was on your table? There's a budget there, please? Okay, does everybody have one? Okay, I'm gonna start off with a Tracy story. Oh, good, oh, good. But I don't know what it was, six weeks ago, Tracy, remember? I called you and I said, Tracy, we may be having a student that's being placed by the court in Volentown. And I said, Tracy, it's a $200,000 tuition. I don't have that money in this year's budget. And so I'm gonna go through and see what we can do to save as much money as possible. Well, okay, so, you know, a week went by and then the state called me up and they said, okay, now, this is a nexus placement. The student is in a special program way far away. The parent has moved into town. Volentown is now responsible for the tuition. And they said, and this was in February, they said, oh, and it's retroactive to November 1st. So we had to go through the budget and this is what's happening. And we had to try to find the money. And we've had to pay for November, December, January, February. And thank goodness, the, the, the parent moved to another community. And, and we do not have to put that money in this budget proposal for next year. And I will tell you, Tracy, I was on pins and needles because this is what's happening. Now, to go on with the story, I, I, I heard through the grapevine that the, the, the town where the child moved, they had to go on essential spending. They had to, you know, rearrange funds. And this is what's happening. There's sometimes now tuitions that are incredibly expensive with specialized transportation, specialized programs when they get there. And as we go through the budget, I will show you some of the things that, that Amy and the staff and the faculty are doing, what we're all doing to try to make, you know, things go. And Dr. Johnson would have been, loved to have been here, but he can't be here tonight. But Amy and I can answer the questions for that. So this budget proposal is for an increase as of this moment, $214,672 or 2.94%. In March, this budget proposal was at 2.7. If we had to budget for that outplacement, it would have been $200,000 more for next year with us. And this is what we would have had to be, had to face with. So we, we were very, very fortunate to have something like that happen where, you know, I wish families well, but you will also read in the newspaper. And when I first started, we were responsible for helping special ed students until the age of 21. And then they made a ruling and they said if they turned 21 that year, you have to allow them to stay in their program for the whole year. So if we had a student that turned 21 on July 1st, we were responsible for their education aged 21, 264 days. Since that time, they raised the age to 22. So now we're responsible if a child turns 20, if a student turns 22 on July 1st, we're responsible for that tuition until age 22 and 364 days. Now, you might be reading in the newspaper that, you know, the superintendents have, have, you know, taken a request to the legislators, once the child turns 22, can we stop services? And can you go back to the old way where the state took responsibility for the adults? So that's, that's in the legislature. I'm gonna tell you another, yeah, I'm gonna tell you just one more story. It's a Tracy story because Tracy went up and testified at the state Capitol. And they have this thing called the ECS. And I wrote about it in the second paragraph in the introduction. We have been at $2,117,243 with the state grant now for the last seven years. And Tracy went up and testified and said, please, keep this money held harmless because there's a formula out there and they haven't decided on it. And that formula, if they implement it, next year we get $114,000 cut in over six years. That equals about $800,000. That little Volentown might be cut where the state is raising this overall grant by 80, 90 million dollars. But up and down Eastern Connecticut, we might be faced with cuts. And Tracy, I just read something the other day and they said they reworked the formula and they're very happy about it. But I think in that rework, we get $115,000 cut rather than... So everybody out there, if you're listening to this, the only way that we've been protected is by our state legislators fighting for the small towns and holding us harmless. And this is a very, very important point because the local tax base cannot absorb it. And just one more comment. Three weeks ago, I got an email with a letter saying, all of your federal funding has been suspended. I don't know how we would immediately suspend it. And we're paying people out of this. We're running programs out of this. It was close for us, $300,000. How do we absorb that? And, you know, so again, we were on pins and needles because of these budgeting things. But then two days later, it was rescinded. But I just want you to know that we're developing budgets under this cloud right now where we can't be certain about what's happening. And oh, by the way, the grants that were cut completely, some of them have been in existence in school districts since the 1960s. There have been consistent bedrock funding for school districts. And all of a sudden, that was taken away. But it was rescinded, so hopefully that will help us. Now, Jack, you had a question?
Yes, the points you were making about the town having to pay for the 21 and 22-year-olds for continuing education. What education is that, special ed or...?
Yeah, no, we, we have, we have adult education, okay? We're in a regional consortium. So if we have graduates that needed emergency high school degree or other types of things, we are in works with a consortium of groups from Norwich and we participate in the Norwich Adult Ed Program, the regular ed program. So we offer opportunities for our graduates who need education after, you know, that. And the grant's been pretty consistent, Jack. And Norwich has been doing, you know, really good job for us, but that option is there. The students I were talking about are the special ed students who have legitimate identified needs. But 20 years ago, they reached 21 and the state took over. Now we're at 22 and the local property taxpayer is paying for those students. Do we have 22-year-old students in it? Yes, we do. And they're part of a thing and I'll be showing the board a little bit later. That's what's happening. Now, okay, so the, the last budget in March was, you know, roughly 2.7%. It went up a little bit, but I need to go over the list that this proposal includes. And this includes the negotiating salaries of the teachers and non-certified pending any adjustments and the classified staff to be verified. We're working on that today. The projected cost of outplacement special ed students based on identified needs. The projected cost of tuitions, regular ed. The initial projected cost of health insurance, this says 10%. Darlene, you haven't heard anything from the state yet. Last year, the state predicted an overall increase of 10%. We were one of the first communities into the Connecticut Consortium. Our print premiums, premiums went up 2.7%. So we really, really did well for this year's budget with health insurance. And we hope within the next few weeks, we might be able to get some additional information and there could be some savings. But that's why I asked Tracy if she could move the town meeting back to maybe June because we need the May meeting to come back here. And I'll give you an update of where we are. The replacement of four buses in our nine-year-old fleet of buses. And there's some interesting stories that have been developed. A construction services allocation to complete the asbestos abatement in four classrooms in the 1960 section of VES and also the 1990 HVAC system in the library. Now, the town has set aside some funds for us. It's just not quite enough for us to, you know, to complete the projects. We're going, we already have RFP prices. Well, we will, we'll get one for the HVAC system and Jack's chair of the building committee. But we've got 32,000 in that account, Jack, to, you know, to divide up among the, the two, two projects. And then we're, we're replacing a retirement by transferring a classroom teacher to a combined position, .8 in the library. We need that because contractually, the teachers have planning time. And that .8 allows us to offer special classes for the home rooms and teachers can have a contractual daily planning time, which is necessary. And then we have a .2 to help with technology. And as you know, Mr. Crotor's done a great job. We had five retirements this year. I'm retiring, they have a search committee. Math retired, Mr. Crotor's gonna teach that next year. Social studies junior high is retiring, Mrs. Britt's gonna teach that. Margaret Voland is retiring and she ran the tech, the library. This position replaces and Amy, Amy configured all sorts of things. And we reached the point where we say, we don't have enough staff to fill that and complete the other responsibilities because it would require taking too much away. So we're going to move somebody into that position who we feel would be excellent. And then we're going to have to do a search committee for a teacher. So, you know, our staffing isn't changing that much. Now with technology, we had a technology coordinator and we've been working with LEARN. And Preston and North Stonington use LEARN's techniques, tech, technology services. And basically, we're going to have LEARN come in and they have a three-tiered approach, but we feel that we can run our technology program with using LEARN services. And quite frankly, if you take the library and the technology budget for this year with the two things that I just mentioned, that's about 60,000 less than we were spending next, this year for technology and the library. So it does result in some savings. And then we're securing the contracted services of a certified nurse's assistant to support handicapped students. And we've reached the point where we have some special ed handicapped students that we need specialized services. And the nurse can't handle the whole school and then work individually with these very needy students. So this is what this budget has. Now, as we go through this, the board comes back May 8th and we have another meeting. I think, I think, and I'm hoping pending any outside placements or anything, that I might be able to come in with even a more reasonable budget, but we have to see what develops. Then we have a budget hearing on May 13th. And then May 20th, there's a town meeting to review the final budget proposals for the Boards of Ed and the Selectmen. And then Tracy and the Selectmen set the referendum for June 3rd. So that's where we are. On the second page, I just wanted to mention to you, there's been a significant change in some things. The 1, 2, 3, fourth paragraph down, we had a school readiness grant for 18 years. And that basically funded almost all of the program for the third and 43 and 4-year-olds. Well, the Office of Early Childhood is changing that and it's not gonna be school readiness anymore. It's gonna be a local governance partnership. And they reduced the rate per student from 4,500 to $3,000. And we have applied for, there's the maximum amount that we can get and we are trying to get 180,000. So the school budget, you know, made up the difference in the, in the loss of the grant. So we've had to make some adjustments with that. That was a significant change. Now, the School Readiness Council makes a decision for our preschool program. If we have to go into a regional partnership, one of the things that I'm asking for is, I want control here in Volentown in our business office for that 180,000. I don't want to have to go out to another office to do it. And that's, that to me is the, the number one most critical part because you know, I like control of the money. I like being able to make adjustments. Okay, now the budget itself, we're getting into some things. We've had some increases in regular education. And you can see that, you know, the, the salary for the, for the teachers, the 111,1,000 account, that's the largest account. That's gone up 28,721. It's now 1.4 million, but that was the regular ed. But if you look down below, special ed is, is going down 8.18%. And if you look at the special ed certified salary, it's gone down from 222,000 to 161,000. We had a special ed teacher retire, is retiring and we're not replacing that person. We, we are declining enrollment and what we're doing is we're rearranging the existing special ed teachers to meet those needs. So that was, that was probably the most significant change. But if you look at 561, 1,200, 561 tuition special ed, it goes from 543,000 to 702,000. And if you look at the tuition for private school, 563, that's now for next year projected to be 118,146. So by the way, that's one student. So, you know, that, that's what we're looking at, but we have to make sure that we're accommodating those needs. Then as you go through the other accounts, you have the special ed administration going up just a little bit. There's an increase in health benefits, but maybe if we get a good rate, we might have some savings there. Social worker, we have a grant. We have a grant that's continuing and we have the services of a social worker just one day a week, but we share that person with Preston. And that's been very helpful. Amy reports it's been a godsend. Okay, then we have guidance, you know, certified salaries. But if you look at other professional services, 320, it goes from 11,008 to 25,009. That's because we have to pay for guidance counseling for students who are assigned to designated high schools and, you know, when they have some need. Health services, 82% increase. If you look down below, other professional services, that's the certified nurse, 40,998. We're not gonna hire a person because the ever-changing needs of the student doesn't require somebody to be here full-time, but we work with a schedule so that we can develop that. And it saved us from, you know, buying a nurse. Psych services is our evaluation. I mentioned a grant, we pay for some of the psych services out of a grant. Speech and language, again, we have, we used to have, you know, if you look back, you know, two years ago, we spent 153. We had a speech clinician retire and we did not replace that person, declining enrollment. We rearranged priorities, but please look at 320 contracted services. We have some special ed students in high school that have to have speech and third, you know, speech services, speech and language services. Improvement of instruction is about the same. Instructional staffing is about the same. Okay, now here's where we get into the library media specialists. Now, if you can see, you know, we're going from 25,796 to 56,721 because we're moving a person into the library and they can have weekly library sessions, reading sessions and other types of things. And I have a list of things that they're gonna work with and we will probably work on rewriting that job description a little bit to match. So you can see that's going up 59%, but then you can look down below with technology. And technology, the person is two days, you know, two tenths, one day a week. And part of that salary is, you know, is 14,000. So if you look up above, library is the .8 and down below, the 14,000 is the .2. That's the same person. And then here we go. Mr. Mr. Crotor's done a great job, wonderful. He helped us a lot, but he's now gonna be in the classroom. And then other professional services in the packet that I sent out to you, that was a lot higher. That was the LEARN services. But we had some meetings and we renegotiated that and that's gonna be 78,850. So if you combine library and media and you look at this year's budget as compared to next, you will see that that goes down. Now, please remember, the line for this year is the approved budget. It's not the actual budget because if we have to buy extra computers and we have to move money into the technology account, the, the technology account might be higher than, you know, than the 240 or if we had to buy some library services. So there is a decline in that account. And then the Board of Education is up 561. The, you know, the, the things that are happening. Megan had a question on 520 last year. That was up, it is, it is 36,924. That's her liability. And the other question she asked is, can we do a one-year contract rather than three? And Kerma agreed to that, so I'm signing an agreement for a one-year contract with Kerma so that you can review that. Superintendent's office, we wanted to make sure that we kept things, you know, within, within a range so that when the new person coming in, that you would be able to, you know, have a range of ability. Who knows? That might change a little bit. Principal's office, again, Amy and, and her program is up by 4.3. Fiscal services is, is up a little bit, but the thing that's, that's there, there was a question about 340, it's 61,245, but we have payroll, we have the audit that's in there. And there's a couple of other things that help with running our finances. And believe me, I would not touch that amount because we do not have a business manager. And I like to sign every purchase order and watch every penny. And the programs that we use help us with the payroll, with the budget and with the audit. And we have made every audit on time and we have fulfilled expending every single grant on time, except for, there was a few thousand dollars someplace out of a million over the last few years. You will read in the paper, and this is what's happening, all of the grants, we have expended them. And then there was an agreement, there was about 14 million left. And the state had said to some towns, okay, we can extend that. But just two weeks ago, all of those funds were eliminated. There's one, one school district around the area, they had a 1.9 million dollars that they lost just like that. So there's things that are happening with some of the federal funds. I'm not sure that they're going to restore that, but we have made sure that we've been relentless with applying for grants and doing other things. Okay, here we go with transportation. And in February, I asked the board to replace eight buses. That didn't go. So last meeting, I asked to replace four. And as a result, you know, we have to have some maintenance and I put in 70,800. And I put in $70,800 for that. And then the lease purchase, I put in a number, 99,800 to pay off the buses over a number of years. And we're looking at a flexible, you know, flexible approach with that. So the, you know, the transportation, regular ed went up. But then you move over to the special ed transportation. And that's gone down 54%. So the overall transportation has not gone up, you know, as a significant amount. And we're getting four new buses. And if you look, we have some expenditures. But one of the big things is the 730 this year is in property and equipment. We bought a two-wheelchair handicap van that has a mechanical lift. We were terrified that somebody was going to get injured pushing wheelchairs in and out of a manual van. It's okay for the younger children. But as children get older, and we're responsible for transporting them. So that was a godsend that we had that this year. Food service, Amy will be talking about that later. I have a 450% increase. But the thing is that years ago, we used to budget about $29,000, $30,000. But over the few years, we were getting full free breakfast and lunch. And that year, we served 44,000 meals. And we got all sorts of reimbursement from the federal government. That's gone away. And this year's budget, I didn't get enough money in there. So I only budgeted 66,000, I mean, 6,600. But that budget is so in deficit right now that I've had to encumber money from other areas. You'll be hearing more about that. Hopefully, we can have a plan of action by the May meeting. The other thing is extracurricular. That's our sports program. Community operations is our contribution to YSB. The town also, you know, makes a contribution to YSB. And that's been, that's been a godsend. 15 years ago, when I wrote the grant for the YSB with Judith Malik, the town saved us. They contributed $7,500 for matching funds. The Board of Education, for some reason, was convinced not to fund the YSB. And the board member that was, I probably shouldn't say this, but the board member who said, Adam, you know, if you can make it work, go ahead without any funding. So what I did was I volunteered for that. And the board's contribution was my time that I donated to YSB. And they accepted that within the grant. So that's how we had matching funds with the town. And then the year later, the program became so successful that the Board of Education matched the 7,500 that the town was putting in. Now, YSB can go under the town. Tracy, I don't think you want to be responsible for the YSB. But we run that out of our budget. And I volunteer on the board and have gone to probably every meeting for the last, I don't know how many years. But the YSB is very successful. And the teachers in our classrooms run the programs. And we get rave reviews for our YSB program. And just to let you know, the things that are happening in YSB, they're happening in our classroom because the teachers who teach YSB, they wind up. And then one of the things that when I was writing the bylaws for YSB was supervision. So we have enough people supervising students, including nurse services, paid for out of the YSB grant, the matching funds from the town, the matching funds for the board, and then the collections for, you know, students participating in the program. And then the last one, I mentioned that, is building improvement. And Jack and the building committee are working on that. And they've developed the RFPs. And that 32,000 is, and Brian's here too, is to contribute to the money that the town has set aside from other grants that we had for this building improvement. Okay, so there, I mean, I probably spoke too long. But I needed to go through everything to make sure where we were at this point. Can we recognize some savings in May? I, there's some things in the background that we're working on, perhaps. But this is where we are right now, Tracy, with the, you know, with the 214, 672,000 dollar increase. Any questions at all?
Excellent job. Thank you. Everyone of my points and questions, you covered every one.
I hit some of your points on Jack.
Every one.
I did?
And more. Thank you.
And always more.
Jack came in, Jack came in one year. And I said, okay, go ahead. I said, what do you got? And he said, I've got 22 questions. And we went through every single one of them. And then, you know, you were very supportive, so I appreciate that, you know. Okay, any other questions from the board? But the thing is, right now, I don't, you know, I mean, you can just take a motion to accept the budget and send it to Town Hall. But your decision was going to have to be made on May 8th. Because you could make a decision, and then this budget could change. And I hope it's not from some unanticipated outplacement.
So if we don't accept it now, if we accept it now, does that follow what you're doing, Tracy? Or does it put us out of sync with everything? Is that what we need to do to stay in sync?
Yeah, I think we're okay to wait.
We're okay to wait, though.
Well, you could just, you could just say forward of the budget to Town Hall.
I think that's what we did last time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, last time, you had to vote and approve a budget to send to Town Hall. So you could, you could take a vote today and just say, we approve forwarding this version of the budget to Town Hall. And then that covers it. Because there are things in here that changed based on the needs of students and based on renegotiating. I mean, we saved $15,000 on the technology contract. And, you know, there could be some other savings by the next budget. But it's good to take a vote to just say, we authorize forwarding this budget to the Town Hall.
We have a motion.
I just think that was already done. That's what I thought.
We did that last meeting.
Did that last?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. But at that point in time of the spending.
Forwarding the, you know, the.
So this isn't approving the figure. This is just saying.
Right, so forward it along to, for review.
Just for.
Do we have a motion to forward to?
Motion.
Town Hall? Second?
Yeah.
I know.
Just to move it along.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for listening to the hearing.
Thank you.
We hope to bring you more savings in a month. But this is the point in time.
Last year, you know, it's kind of put out by. Remember that? We had a hearing last year. Jack listened here.
It was here.
Yeah.
Good work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Okay. I think, Tracy and Julie, you're good from this perspective? Or did you want to give an update as a guest?
You want to give an update on what we did at the town?
Sure. Yeah, maybe just a brief update. That'd be great. If it's not.
We had our first draft presented at Tuesday's meeting. The fire department is requesting extra funds. They're looking at needing to go seven days a week. So that's going to be one of the very expensive. Yeah. We haven't gotten the final figure, so we don't have the final town budget yet. We're hoping by the next meeting, 20 seconds, to have our final and then our second hearing on May 13th. Right now, we're at 2.9%. The revow, everybody's went up like 50 to 70%. So the mill rate is going to change drastically. So it's going to be a little difficult of a year because it's going to look like the mill rate's going way down. But it's because everybody's assessment values went high. So we are looking at a 7% 7-mill decrease right now, but.
The value of a mill is changing significantly too. So it's going from almost 100,000 value increase.
Almost 100,000, yeah.
For what mills were. It's because of the houses being evaluated by.
Which, in some sense, we're a little lucky because a lot of towns, they're with the revow with the motor vehicles and personal property, their revow, they do a revow, but the grand list went down. So even before their budgets changed, their budgets went up just because of the. The grand list going down from the motor vehicles. So this will help us a little bit. But it's going to be, it's a very difficult budget.
So with all of this, what is going to be the impact in your estimation on taxpayers right now?
Well, the impact is going to be whatever the school budget goes up and whatever the town budget goes up. I mean, and if not everybody's revow went up consistently, like some people's houses went up 50%, some people went up 70%. So it's going to, it's going to impact people differently.
So depending if you have a bunch of old beta cars or you just got a brand-new car for 70 grand, you're going to be going up.
If you only have vehicles, your taxes will probably go down.
They go down. But if you got a new vehicle, they're going up.
More and more of the tax burden is going on on people who own homes in the community. It goes down to the homeowners versus the renters.
I have a question, Tracy. I know you fight for this. Is there any movement at all from the state helping our fire department for policing their property, cleaning up messes out there during the summer?
No, I've been trying to.
That could help a lot. And I know you work on that.
Yes. I haven't had any luck with that.
I think a lot of the seven-day was probably that figured into it.
Yeah.
Just ross it. We have to foot all that.
They just say that's what the pilot money's for, even though the pilot money doesn't really amount to anything. But that's what they say.
Because Hartford Bridgeport don't have a big state forest in the middle of their land.
They get pilot money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the crazy thing with the way that the pilot money's figured out, the, all of our state-owned property is land, which most of it's in PA 390, which is like a tax incentive. Like, so the land that the state owns here is assessed at a lower value than the property that they have in the cities. It's buildings, so it's assessed at a higher value. So they end up getting more money for their pilot because the assessed value of the buildings is higher than all of our land because they also get a, they also get a decrease in the value of the land because they put it all in PA 490. So I was trying to fight the state to be, why, why are you, why is the state land in PA 490, which is set up as a tax incentive to like, to give residents to like, preserve land? So why does the state need to be put in that? And I was told, well, everyone's a property owner, even the state, so they're allowed to do the same thing as every other property owner.
All those people come to our little forest to camp and everything from all over the state.
So they assessed at a low, it's not assessed at the regular value of land. It's assessed at a less.
The fire department is busy during the summer too. There's a lot of foolishness that they have to pick up after.
So I tried to go after them to get it out of PA 490. And they're like, well, we're all property owners. We're all, you can't tell one property owner they can do one thing and another one they can't, they can't. So.
One property owner does get to make the rules, so.
And they get to follow zoning if they want to do something on their property. So they do get a different treatment. So I didn't like that response either. That's why they said we're just going to bring you the dead chickens.
And the chicken poop.
We hope to God that that was.
Oh, my goodness.
So I see the dates of the meetings. What time are they going to be at?
Typically at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, any other questions?
And we're going to do a joint public hearing on the budgets.
Yes.
Yeah, that's on the Tuesday.
Okay, on the 13th. And that's going to be at the school.
Is that Thursday?
It's a Tuesday. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yep, I apologize for that. I go.
What are the days we're doing it? May what?
20th.
20th.
And that's a Tuesday?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, so our next Board of Selectmen's meeting, we're going to be finalizing our budget and our capital projects too. So if you have any capital projects that you need to go to the town, we need all that information by the next meeting.
I'm sure we could think of something.
We can't guarantee.
I sent it to you, right?
The text looked a little rough.
I scanned them to you, I thought.
I was looking for them. I don't know.
I'll scan them again for you tomorrow because I know I scanned them a while ago.
There is one, I meant to send it to you today. They, you had a 20,699 oil tank.
Yep.
So the Selectmen at this past meeting just voted to move that to your HVAC.
I thought, so I already added it.
Yeah. And we're not sure if we're going to have a lot of money to assign for capital projects because we did put in for a steep grant. And if we, if we get the steep grant, we automatically have $200,000 going towards the town side of that steep grant. So that only leaves us not much to spread out to the rest of the capital projects. Our revenue will be less this year than normal.
You know, I mean, Tracy, usually by this time, I'm getting, you know, notices of grants that might be available. There's nothing.
Yeah.
There's nothing available. And we're just finishing up some projects. But the building committee and Brian has been working on trying to stabilize the five projects that we have in our capital improvement plan. And we'll see, you know, how we can do it. And Jody Grenier is also checking on safety. Our insurance company has safety inspections. So right now, the building, you know, is doing okay. The two projects I mentioned, library, HVAC, and, you know, what was the other one? The asbestos, you know, those were the priorities. We're taking care of those. We have the funds. How long can we sustain that? I'm not sure. It depends on, you know, how some of the older components do. But we have enough money in the budget to hold us on. And I hope that we don't have to ask for a special allocation.
Well, another thing we found out last week too is the Ford Hill Bridge project that we're working on. The state, it's a, it's covered fully with funding from the state and the federal government. And we had worked out an agreement with the state where they were going to take over the whole project because it's a reimbursable grant. So they were going to take over the whole project and handle the payments on it and get the reimbursable for themselves. But they just told us last week that there's the construction phase of the project. They can't do the, they can't do the funding for. We have to do it ourselves.
How much will happen?
It won't cost us anything. It just means we have to, we have to make the payments and then be reimbursed. But we're looking at payments that could be over a million dollars.
Huge checks, yeah.
We don't have a checking account that can cover that. Honestly. And that was the whole point of them taking it over because we didn't have a checking account that had a million dollars. And I said, I can't wait 30 days to be reimbursed. A million dollars and everything. We can't, we can't run the town if that happens. And they were like, well, do you want a bridge? I was pretty much turned.
Oh, my God.
You really want to finance a lot of things.
If we close the bridge, we have to close it, which is going to be even worse. So we are going forward with the project. And we're trying to figure out where, how to cover it short-term.
Win the Lotto. Buy tickets for the town. Buy tickets for the town. Buy some tickets for the town, scratch them, Tracy.
All right. Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Any other questions, we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you for the preview. Yes, okay, well, thank you for coming.
I can't thank the, the town enough for the support that you've, you've given us, and it's been critical in helping us maintain the buildings and, and holding a steady line. So, thank you. You've always been there, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, budget is complete. We're to consent agenda, just to make a motion as long as we're comfortable. Okay. Hi, Sarah. Just in time, okay. We will adjourn our public hearing at six fifty-five and call our regular meeting to order at six fifty-five and a half. And welcome, Sarah Thompson. Okay. That's okay. So, are we doing, we're moving to consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Our consent agenda, I think we are all having a motion to approve it as submitted?
Motion.
One favor?
That dark one right there, flip it over.
We can move to administrative reports.
I included in my report this time, pretty lengthy calendar for April. I didn't do May because it went up to like a third page. So, things are very busy right now, lots of field trips. Couple of fun things that happened, we had our PTO family dance, we had over a hundred people come, and that's what I meant for K to five. And PTO put on a great event, DJ, pizza, food for kids, it was Hawaiian themed. We had YSB and school readiness combined activity, which we normally do in March, it was under the big top. We hired some circus performers to come, and they do like a bubble. This particular one, he did a bubble activities, it was a lot, a lot about bubbles and, and things like that, so that was really fun. We bring in our early childhood families, we serve them dinner, and then they stay for the show with all their young kids. So, it's really nice to get pre-K and K in together in conjunction with YSB, so that's one of our planned programs, our grant that we do. One of the other things that started up was track, so volleyball ended, track started to, we're in our final sports season right now for our middle school kids, and that'll begin sometime next week. Mr. Rasko and Mr. Salter are obviously. I think that's it for me, unless anybody has questions?
I just have a question about the early childhood. Now, our reimbursement is dropping to three thousand, does it make it worthwhile to take children from other towns?
So, we do at times. So, with, with one hundred and eighty thousand, we're going to take thirty spaces to get one hundred and eighty. So, if we took forty-four spaces, we actually would get less money.
Okay.
Because it's about hours in the day. So, we took forty-four, we can only take, it would be like two and a half hours, opposed to taking thirty where we can, it's considered like a halftime slot. So, we do, but I think what's going to happen over time is that we are always on the cusp of thirty to thirty-five residents, between three and four.
So, we're not opening many.
It wouldn't really need to be open. When we had forty-four, we were always seeking non-residents because we tried to fill those. So, it kind of, I think, is going to be a benefit for us, not that we don't want to take non-residents, but we're not searching to try to fill the seats really as much anymore.
Yeah, that was my question, you know, we're pretty much there, where we should be.
Where we should, where we actually should be in what our enrollment is, yeah.
In general, year after year.
Exactly.
And that just happened to coincide with their changing the, the name and the program and the.
If we didn't, then we would've still went for forty-four, we would've still, you know, we would've just done, yeah, we would've been kind of stuck with that and trying to get those non-residents. And it's hard, I mean, we're still not full, even with non-residents, because non-residents have to be typically developing peers, we bring them into a program, so we just can't, you know, we do, we go through a screening process, so we might have fifteen, we might be able to take that.
So, we don't need to do any of that anymore, just kind of.
I predict we probably won't need to.
That's good.
So, there's no other questions about that? I can do, I can just say something briefly about Lloyd's report. So, we're at the point in the year where we are beginning our transition meetings for our eighth graders. So, we have a couple of those coming up, so all PBT and five oh four transition meetings happen after April meeting until we begin those. We go through the process with the high schools, course selections, things like that. Some years, it's light, some years, it's a little bit heavier, depending on where students are going, what needs that they might have. Any other questions for Lloyd, that maybe I could answer? All right?
Do you want to go with Lloyd's written report?
Yep, all seven.
We did.
She just did a quick summary.
Yeah, we did.
She did a quick summary.
Oh, okay. I had one last thing for the special ed, and this is the listing of the special ed, you know, tuitions and where we are right now. As I explained in the budget, that's for Amy, and then as I explained in the budget, this is our, our sheet, and this has the most current high school, you know, enrollment figures and the special ed figures. And this is a roller coaster ride because it, it will change. You could just pass the extra on to Darlena or somebody, or DeeDee. But, you know, right now with Griswold for next year, we've projected thirty students. NFA has thirty-six, but we're only paying for twenty-seven. So, we get a savings.
So, next year, though, we'll pay for thirty-six.
So, next year, we get a savings, but the following year, but that, that, that class that's coming up after that is a little down, but this is one of those years where we wind up paying tuition for twenty-seven, even though the enrollment is thirty-six. Please note that Griswold has gone up considerably. Wheeler will have eleven students in the regular program and four in special ed down below. And then Ellis Tech will have fifteen students, Norwich Tech eleven, Killingley Voag, there'll be none, Marine Science Magnet School will have four students. Notice the tuition at the Marine Science Magnet School is thirty-seven seventeen. And then we go down through with the special ed cost. NFA, we have two students in programs, that's a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Wheeler, we have four students, the tuition is eighty-six, eight eighty. And then at Griswold, we have a number of students, the alternative program and the transitional programs. Please note twelve plus on the students, there's four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars at, at, you know, Griswold High. Norwich Transitional Academy is a three tenths placement for twenty-four thousand. And then the last one, the Learning Clinic, has a hundred and eleven thousand, nine ninety-five, nine ninety-six, that's just one student. So. And please remember, the one that isn't on here, that was that state placement, if that had been on here, I would've had to add two hundred thousand to this list. But that, that, that was a movement out of all in towns. So, things are that close with what's happening, but this gives you, and I know the Transportation Committee has been working on, you know, another, another format that might explain things, but this is the one that we've been using to put it in the budget because it has all the function object numbers that are there. And this is where we stand on that, okay? And that gives you the special ed update.
Okay, Superintendent update?
You have my report now, yes. I, I just wanted to mention that right now, between the, the school lunch program, we have, you know, fourteen thousand, seven twenty-four as of March thirty-first in the cash, and then there was a minus twenty-eight thousand in the board of ed account. So, the overall for the school lunch program is the minus thirteen thousand, three forty-eight and eighty-nine cents as of March thirty-first. And we have to see, now, not all of the reimbursement is, is in another things, but as Amy goes through a, a report on the school lunch program that, that she's been working on, you may have a, you know, an ability to make some adjustments on that. I really, I really wanted to make sure that you had, you had that number. Now, I wanted to do a couple of follow-up things with what's happening. Good news for this month, I hope it can continue, and, you know, thank you, Crystal, for this report. This is electricity.
Thank you.
And this is a charge. Now, we have a solar panel electricity committee that reviews what's happening, but the thing is that, you know, we really thought that our electricity was going up. November, we spent sixty-seven hundred, December, ten thousand one, February, ten thousand, January, eleven thousand six, February, and then we were pleasantly surprised because we dropped down four thousand dollars. So, the solar panels are kicking in. And then we, we, Crystal reviewed all sorts of rates, and we locked in, what was it?
Fifteen point six.
Yeah, so, you know, and the solar panels are locked into a rate of point nine five. Yeah, but the thing that's happening is that you can see the supply side, we have to pay for transporting electricity, but the big thing is, there's good news. So, I was waiting to have another bill, and I hope that this trend continues. So, that was, that was part of the, the thing. Of course, the enrollment, you know, the, the high school enrollment right now is a hundred and twenty-five. The last year was one twenty-nine, the year before, one twenty-six, so that, you know, and one thirty. So, we have had, we have had some, a little bit declining enrollment in high school. The big thing is that, you know, we, we're down to two sixteen students at the K through eight level, but again, remember, we just went through with, you know, reducing staff so that as the student population declines, and Amy has been very creative in reorganizing, you know, staff to meet the needs of students. I wanted to mention that we returned sixty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars to the town, but I just got a note from the state, they made a, they want a refund on the educational cost sharing grant. What was it, Darlena?
Twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, so we have to, we're talking with Tony, I, I don't have twenty-two thousand in our budget.
Automatically, we'll go through the town.
Did Tony say the, the town would cover it? So, that's the way that the town is, so we give it, then we take it. I mean, it's, it's just incredible. So, we went through all of the things, applied for the grant, they authorized, and then they said, hold on, we, we want you to give us money back. You've got policy, you've got policy updates that, that we've given to you. Now, bear with me because I just wanted to update some of the things. You know, as I mentioned in the budget process, oh, where is it? You know, okay, yeah, the next one is, is some of the staffing, and I mentioned this in the budget process, but this is where we are in the projected staff for next year, and if there's any leftover, just give them to, you know, to DeeDee. But the thing here is that, you know, superintendent to be determined, the intern, we use an outside grant to pay for an intern, that's to be determined. Student services, we have some contracted services. Technology coordinator is the learned technology services, and this is great, I mean, we went from ninety-three five to seventy-eight thousand, eight fifty. Then Brian's here, he's director of our facilities. We have one full-time custodian, two part-time school lunch program, and then we have our substitute list, and then the teachers, and you could see, to be determined, grade one, because that position is being put over, you can look down below, special services to be determined. And the art, music, and phys ed, and library, again, are used in the schedule to give some mandated teacher planning time. And Andrea Kelly is the SRBI and special remediation. Special ed teachers, where we did have four, now we have three. And then Amy's reorganized with the K, pre-K through five, and then the six through eight. And again, you know, you can see the changeovers, mics in math, Karens in social studies, we have Spanish, and then of course, English, language, or science. We have one para who's just a straight para, all the other paras are paraprofessionals with special services. We have the transportation coordinator, bus drivers, we're still short a bus driver. And then we have backup driver, and then we have some van drivers, and Darlena is here, she, she renewed one of her licenses as a van driver, and, and this special occasion, she'll have to run out and, and, and drive a student. We have bus monitors, and then Melinda Bryan, I put her on the list, but she runs our, you know, YSB program. So, that takes care of the staffing update, and those, those positions are in the budget right now. And then I had another thing that I, I wanted to share with you, if I can find it in my pile of stuff. Oh, I know, I put it over here. Well, the, the, the one thing I wanted to mention, and I think I mentioned it earlier, is that Megan requested we do a one-year contract with Karma, so that's what we did, and they agreed to that. And they also approached us about possibly having the, having the town allow them to make a quote. I think that's it for my report, Kate.
Any questions so far for Adam? Thank you for the administrative reports, everyone. So, for moving to old business, we did the budget proposal, so I think we're covered in that regard, so we can move to number two, the transportation update.
I resurrected the paper that we had last time, the track. So, just in that section, I was contacted by Eastcon this week. They needed more information regarding specific roads and turnarounds that we utilize. So, I, Anne and I both spoke to the person that's doing this, and we supplied them with more information. So, remember, Eastcon is the one piece of the puzzle that we had started with, but we have the comprehensive audit happening currently, so that, all that information was provided from the central office to the contractor that was selected. And then hopefully by the May twenty-second meeting, I believe it is, he will come in with that information. So, just a small update on that piece, so we're, you know, we're moving along, it's not as fast as we probably want, but within the process of those businesses, being able to get that done.
With the transportation.
That was transportation.
Okay, I've got a couple of things on transportation. First of all, we signed a contract with Alliance Education Associates, and I'm giving you the full contract because this, this explains the services. And I will tell you, they have asked for all sorts of information, a huge pile of information, but we're looking at having their report done by May twenty-second, which is the, you know, the, the, the next. know, the, the next Thursday in, in May. And I would like to request, Kate, that Mr. Labrie, they need one more?
Yeah.
Yeah. Here. Here, there's, there's one here. This is extra, I don't need it.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Um, but, uh, you know, Mr. Labrie, he's a retired superintendent, but he's worked with transportation. This is the, this is the contract. Um, it's a total review of, of our transportation system. And Mr. Labrie, I asked him if he could attend a special board meeting on May twenty-second here to go over his findings. And as you can see, the contract covers a lot of areas. But, uh, you know, this will be an opportunity for us to put, uh, the bus routes, what we're doing with buses and other things into perspective, okay? And, uh, I, I had a, a very fine conversation with him. Uh, Amy has, I think you've, you've spoken to him too, and, and he's very good at getting back to us. And I look forward to, you know, some interesting, um, you know, presentations. Now, related to the buses, and when I talked to him about getting the four buses, I said, with my financing, I would, I would like to, you know, I, I told him, we, we find lease purchase buses before, and we paid it off in three years. And he said, so you made the payment for the year at the beginning of the year? And I said, yes. And we saved, you know, that interest because they didn't have to charge us interest on those dollars. And, and so, you know, you can move through a lease purchase pretty quickly. But Scott Davis with School Lines called me back up, and he said, Adam, my higher-ups, everything, we're being hit by price increases, tariffs, and we, we want to make a request for, you know, an additional three thousand dollars for buses. And I said, how about twenty-five hundred? And he said he'll talk to them, and they agreed to that. But I wanted to give you an update on how we're, we're, we're looking at financing this. And the money is, is in the budget proposal. And, um, it is, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar more on a, on a bus. But I'll tell you, it fits into the plan of action so that, uh, you know, it, it's, it's in the long run, may not have a big increase. Now, before, when I gave this proposal, I had down, let's put down a five, a ten thousand dollar down payment. But I, I could only come up with like four thousand out of this budget. And I'm not even sure I can do that with somebody under the air expenses. But the thing is that, uh, you know, the three passengers there, you know, now a hundred and thirty-one dollar bus. And oh my gosh, it cut off the past, it cut off the, the ending. I had a, I had a thing there, I'm sorry, I printed it up too fast. But, yeah, okay, it went down, oh, thank you, Kate, it went down below. But the thing is that we're looking at financing three hundred eighty-four thousand, nine sixty-three, perhaps over five years, depending upon the rate that we get. And then, um, the, uh, you know, the previous, uh, lease purchase, uh, we wound up, uh, financing four hundred and sixty thousand over three years. So, you know, it's just a little bit less. But this is in the budget. But I did have to increase the maintenance. Because, you know, last meeting, I, I said, let's go with eight buses. And I reduced the maintenance costs for the remaining fleet to next to nothing. But now I had to increase that. It's in the budget for like seventy thousand, eight hundred. But this is the new, this is the new quote. I hope it's, I hope I copied the right thing here. So I, I had to rip this off, it was a last-minute thing. So these were the, these were the, uh, the revised, revised quote. The only difference is that it is twenty-five hundred dollars more. Is this doable? Yes, it's very doable. And, uh, you know, especially with, you know, some of the things that we're, that we're looking for. Now, as far as financing is concerned, I went back nine years. And I know it's a lot of information, but, uh, we have to talk about financing. And, uh, as you can see, this is a rather lengthy document. But this is what we did in two thousand sixteen to finance the previous buses. And I have to check with Tracy and Tony Madera because we went out and we got all sorts of prices nine years ago. And then there were some things that happened, and I, I checked with Fred, and, uh, we had to call Wells Fargo. This will be the, this will be the third time that, you know, that we've used them. But if there's a way that we could use them again, there's some flexibility. Early payments, you know, no upfront charges. There's some benefits to this. And they might be part of the state consortium, which allows the board to waive the bid process. But between now and May, I have to come up with a recommendation to the board with which way we're going to do, do this. And I'll check with Tony Madera, the treasurer, and of course, Tracy and Julie, to see where they want to go with this. Now, at one point, they said, well, maybe there should be a town expense. And I said, we've traditionally been able to handle this in the school budget. And they were very appreciative of us doing that.
They want us to pay for the buses, but they have to, something about the procurement process, they have to do the lease, purchase lease.
Right, so.
Through their, through their operations. So they might take, like, take your lead on it, but I think there's a, a nuance to the procedure.
So they have to sign the contract.
Yeah, so, so, you know, but I'll tell you, Fred reviewed this contract nine years ago. He went over it with a fine-tooth comb. Uh, I might say to Tracy and Tony, let's use the town attorney if they, if he says this is okay.
They'll say that.
Well, then it's a go.
Please do that, yeah.
Yeah, please do that.
So, uh, this is some, but you've got the paperwork, and I don't want to bury you with paperwork. But the thing is, you need to understand some of the dynamics involved with this. And there's a lot of fine print. But then at the last moment, when I was going over this stuff, you know, uh, I reached the point where I had to call Fred on the last one because we were trying to get with companies. And there were, there were a lot of little hidden, hidden gems in there. And so we, we, we went with our, uh, we went with our last, uh, our last person. Okay. And then, uh, Amy and I, for the next meeting, will be working on the job description for that technology and the, uh, and the librarian. And, uh, this is a needed position. And I just wanted to.
That is not transportation.
I'm not on transportation. Yeah, I've got to get back to transportation. Okay, I'll leave library alone, thanks, Kate. I think, I think I covered it all, okay?
Yep.
But I have two more things related to the budget that we can talk about, so at another time.
Do we don't, do we need a motion for the, the, um, the update on the, the cost?
No, no.
All right, well, thank you for the update. That's unfortunate. They could give us a bid and then change it. That's interesting. Okay, so now we are moving along to food, food services update.
Yesterday, um, we had a visit with Eastcon Food Service. We connected, they were able to fit us in their calendar. Um, three individuals from Eastcon came, so their director, who handles the finance part of it, and then two women who operate the kitchen aspect of it. Four, um, these local towns like, um, Brent, Brookwood, um, you know, these small places Scotland, who all buy into this food service. So they came in, um, they toured, they watched both of our lunch waves, they were, um, you know, they asked a lot of questions that our, you know, our food ladies can answer, that I really can't answer. And then I, Darlena, provided some information on the backend for what it looks like through payroll, food services, and those types of, um, accounts. So when we left yesterday, their last, you know, meeting with me is, they need to go back and look at all of our numbers. So they need to look at our budget and how that works. And are we in deficit, are we not in deficit? What happens come the end of the year? Do we have a lot of parents that still owe? In order for them to take us on, all these things kind of have to align. So we met with them, they'll get back to me, hopefully. I'm, I'm going to assume probably over vacation or the week after. Um, and so hopefully by then in the May meeting, there'll be some more information, whether it's, you know, a, a step in one direction or, or not. But we'll at least know comparatively what we're up against, um, if we were to outsource to something like Eastcon.
So that would replace having.
So, right, so our two ladies would then work for Eastcon.
Eastcon.
Yep, and they would take over the, um.
The purchasing.
They would be like the umbrella. So they take over the menu, they take over, um, our claim system, they take over applications, they, they take over all the reports that have to be submitted. There's a lot of different financial reports that go with that. So that replaces, um, the position that would be our food service director. They become that person.
Do they do the payroll?
It would all go through that.
Employees to the lunchroom.
Yeah.
Would they be the ones setting the price of lunches?
They would. And so I did a little investigation on their, like, what their collective for those other little schools they have. And it ranged, it was some were three twenty-five, some were three fifty. It probably depends on how much revenue they get from purchases, what sets their price in their program, just, just like ours.
Because we need to change our pricing significantly right now.
They do talk a lot about, um, which is great, because our head cook always wants to bring in fresh food and fresh produce, so. And I said, that is something we always want to do, but we don't, we don't have a place, like, how do you get that? Like, we are a, a single standalone kitchen, you know? So they have the resources for that because they're working with other single standalone kitchens, essentially, some bigger than us, some smaller. So that is something that she talked about, you know, we do bring in a lot, we try to bring in fresh food and produce and things like that locally.
What about appliances? We're still responsible for all the appliances.
We would be responsible.
They do nothing with the refrigeration, with the stoves, nothing.
No, because those, those technically won't go there. Well, in town, so we would, you know, the repairs, the big towels, so, you know, all that kind of stuff still falls under the Board of Ed. Um, our freezer, that belongs to us.
Pre-price setting, they have to have something that people will buy. Otherwise, nobody, you know, they go.
And they were very receptive to like, what our kids like. Our kids like tacos on Tuesday, they eat chicken on Monday.
Walking tacos.
They eat tacos, they eat pizza on Friday, and then they like brunch for lunch, or they like pasta. That's all they, that's all they like, you know, and.
Right.
She tries to make other things, but we have big kids who love to eat different things. We have little kids who don't, they like their menu, you know, so. But they were very flexible in saying, like, you know, we do like to try other things, and, and we allow that, you know, to happen. You know, we tried shepherd's pie once, nobody allows shepherd's pie. So like, those things that come up and that you want to try to serve kids different things, um, they were receptive to that.
So they'll continue, right, it wouldn't just be lunch, it'd be breakfast lunch.
Yep, yep, the same things that, yes. And they asked about that too, like, how many, we don't, our breakfast numbers aren't high anymore, they're maybe twenty-five a day. Um, so, you know, she does offer a variety, but it's not plentiful.
We don't have the teachers in the lower grades right now who are very gung-ho. Mike used to be gung-ho, his whole class got breakfast every morning, no matter how, what.
Good quality is probably defined.
It's the same. His class, everybody, because he got breakfast and gave them time, the entire class got breakfast.
And I think it's a price point for people too. For two twenty-five, you can buy a box of cereal for four dollars, that will last you a whole week with a gallon of milk.
Yeah.
If you're full pay, that's.
Yeah, if you're full pay, it stops adding up.
It does add up, if you go in five days, so.
And do they handle all that getting up?
Yep, so they have their own.
It's not you doing all that.
All that extra paperwork, no.
It gets off.
And they have their own point-of-sale system, so hopefully we could get rid of Rugtrack, the worst system you could ever put into Power School to pay one. But we try, it's just, it's terrible.
Charges with the deposits.
And we pay for that, right?
I think this is left to percentage, right?
Yeah, it's a parent's pay.
No, the parents just pay the charges for it. We don't pay for that. When we go in to pay with their credit card.
Correct. It's a percentage, it's two percent, I think, parents have to pay.
Yeah.
They pay with a credit card, they can send in a check, though.
Yes, they could. But it hopefully would be easier, because I think it's more like, uh, either an app or just an online direct site, you just go in and pay. It's not like this backdoor through Power School.
Oh, wow. So May twenty-second, they're going to come? If not, did you say?
No, I'm hoping that they'll, they'll get back to me by the first board meeting.
Kind of be good if it be after, kind of, a little bit of the budget, not the whole thing, but.
I know you said they're trying to keep to our same menu, but I think one of the things we had talked about was maybe improving the quality of food that was being served. So could we just ask them for what sample menus they might have?
Yeah.
I know that we've got a resistant population, but I think the, some of the current food choices.
Yeah, and I think that also, you know, depends upon, um, price point too. Possibly lower price, like, what are we really, you know, what can you really do?
You said they have, like, they'll buy local, from local grocery stores and.
I mean, we only have one.
That would be great. I mean, we live in town, that's great.
I think we only have two that we buy from Wade's Dairy, and I'm trying to think of the other one. There's, there's two of them.
There's the HCB, yeah.
There's only two of them, yeah.
So there's different things, you know, that you can have. And branching out a little bit, you know, we talked, you know, one time, kids were like, can we have chicken wings? I'm like, we're not serving anything with bones. Somebody's going to show, we're not, we're not serving bones. But you can buy ones that are a Tyson-type chick, you know.
Yeah.
They might be, but those things we can, you know, venture out on. Maybe those other sample menus have something different, we don't know, you know.
Fresh produce and fruit would be, they're a great addition.
Fruit, maybe. Kids are not big on produce, unfortunately.
We've been getting a lot of cucumbers lately, sometimes.
Cucumbers.
Noodles.
They're good for that, they're good for that, carrots.
Cucumber sticks, that's about it.
Celery, peanut butter.
Oh, yeah. Sometimes, like, Corinne had to explain to her, like, sometimes I get bananas, and they're great. Sometimes you get bananas and the whole thing is brown, and they don't eat them because they're like a brown, you know, you can't eat a brown banana, so that's, it's hit or miss sometimes. Yeah.
It would be nice to get a few more local producers here from Connecticut at least, not really.
It'd be great to have something in town.
Yeah.
Right, like, it's grown here, and you, you know.
Maybe ice cream. We don't even have that, they're both, one's in Charlotte, one's in Brazil, you know, and stuff, so.
I was only going to ask about the commodity, just the advantages that come from, you know, does it seem like they benefit from the same structure that, that we're getting currently with the commodity pricing and so forth?
I believe so, yeah.
That would be like one thing, just, just to compare for the future research.
That's what Tom brought to us.
Right, he brought that, I think, like, we got all of it, that was it.
Yes, definitely. And so that would just.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. Okay, so, moving along to high school choices. We do still have our policy five, one-one-one-one, spot one-one, designated high schools.
Can we just table this because we've been discussing and looking into it?
Well, we should probably, so, there's a policy impact, I mean.
Well, it's a designated, yeah.
I, we probably should rate it to make sure it doesn't impact.
Yeah.
If we, there's a timeline of, I don't think so, I didn't.
No, but we didn't, we not, did not get rid of Quinbyard yet, and I don't know why we have said to done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should just do that, and.
I'd like a motion for that, because.
I think we could do that safely, I second that, without any, we have nobody this year, we haven't had anybody in a number of years go there, so I think.
And that is a recommendation from the committee that we had talked about, was just not transporting any longer to Q and C.
Yeah, that, that's an easy.
It's an easy one, so.
Yeah, that's an easy start.
Okay, I'll favor to remove Quinbyard Community College.
Aye.
As a designated. Any opposed?
So do you want to also include the change to the policy for now, or do you want?
Yeah.
And the.
No, you can change, you change the policy to include that.
Yeah, that's one down.
So we, yeah, so Sarah, myself, Kate, Jackie Valenport, Rachel Othau, we met, I think I may have talked about that last time. We started developing a spreadsheet, we actually, after the last meeting, added on to it, and there's another tab that actually compares who around us sends to who. And there's another tab that actually compares who around us sends to who. And so there is a pretty big variation. Some are three. Sterling, for example, is, they send to three places. Ellis, Plainfield, Kalingly, right, so they send to three. Other people like us send to seven, eight, nine places, like that's in Ledger, so different. And we could share that next time if people wanted to just see the comparison between the, the two. So one of the things that we ended up doing after the last meeting, we actually toured Ledger Boag. So we went to Ledger just this past week, myself, Sarah, Jackie and Rachel. It was great. I mean, it was a really nice Boag program. I was very pleasantly surprised at what it had to offer, the amount of kids that were in it. The high school was nice. It was interesting, the program, so they had small animal care, large animal care. They had, I don't know if it was precision machinery or small engines, one of the tracks.
Yeah, I don't know what that track was, what?
Farm mechanics.
Farm mechanics. It was like a hybrid carpentry and welding metals, right? So like, I think it, like, so the, the students that were in that, who spoke to us in that class, some of their projects were like rebuilding engines, learning how to build.
Tractor.
Like, yeah, like learning how to build and construct like outbuildings, like that you would need.
They talked about welding lots, they had different welding stations set up there, so.
So if you run in a farm.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I, I sort of loosely put it as like farm maintenance or like, I don't know, things I think of that my father-in-law does on his property.
And I think one of the great things was, so let me say this first, they also had Aqua.
Oh, yeah.
No, hydroponics.
Well, they had, there was two things with the, the Aqua thing had two parts to it. There was the hydroponics and, and growing plants and vegetables that way. And then there was also like the fish farming. I don't know another way.
That was amazing.
Fisheries, yeah.
Yeah, so, so they're, they're, they, that whole program was called Aqua, I think Aqua Ponics.
Maybe.
But it was sort of split between the fish and the food. Sorry, that's my, very rudimentary.
And the fish was great. I mean, they would taste, I mean, probably as big as this around, there probably must have been ten to twelve of them, all different kinds of fish. So like, boy, tilapia, and he said, you know, we raise tilapia, then we eat tilapia. And they had the eggs, so they had fish eggs that they then bring to like the state, the hatchery. And then like, so they harvest the eggs, they bring the, like, so they go through all this, it was very, very interesting. I was like, this is great.
Restocking.
Maybe, just one thing, maybe when we have them coming to do this grassroots thing, how change into Ledger, what the impact on our.
Yes, that is one thing.
That would be one of the question. And the same thing about Killingley Boag versus Grasso or Norwich Tech.
Put that in there though.
Yeah.
We could ask for that in there. Just because it might make a difference.
That's why we're really looking at stuff to consolidate.
Yeah, to see if the consideration is impactful.
Driving round and round in circles.
It sounds like a similar or at least in the same ballpark program as they have a marine science magnet, which is a huge transport for us too. And I wonder if opening up this Boag opportunity versus driving to Killingley and try, driving down to marine science, if that could be a better.
That's what they have at marine science.
They do though, they have like the big fish thing.
Cause my son goes there.
But I'm saying like that particular.
But it's based on a whole botany type thing. It's not based on money raising or doing it commercially or anything. It's based academically on it, looking at them from a microscopic thing, that type of thing. It's more, much more, it's not focused on using it as a, a lot, it's not like work related. It's more like how to look at something, you know, it's, yeah, it's more STEM school type thing, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the Boag, I don't think, at all. Marine science.
No, it wouldn't meet the Boag, no.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I think the, the takeaway for me from the visit was a few things. One, it was quite an impressive program with a number of options that, I think it's pretty clear the amount of investment that Ledger has put into their Boag program. So it had a lot of students in each of the sections, a lot of different options that I think were just quite impressive to see. I think secondly, it was interesting to talk with the superintendent. We asked him a lot about, you know, students who are in the Boag program who might need, still might need special ed support and how are they able to accommodate students? And I think so it was reassuring to hear that if there was a student that needed, to, you know, needed some special ed support or that, that is available and able to be accommodated. I think the walk through the high school during school was also just impressive, like the hallways were quiet, there wasn't ruckus during the bell change. So just like from a experience perspective, I would just kind of call that out as nice to see and that there was just an extensive amount of opportunity. And then they also have something called morning crew. So they welcome our students being dropped off early, because there's opportunities for students to do things before school as part of care. So an early drop-off time is actually encouraged because all students in the Boag program are put to work, caring for the animals before they start their day.
And it's, and it's animals, so there were chinchillas, ferrets, birds, hamsters, chickens, goats, llamas. Llamas, you know, all that outside.
One of the animals, there's, I think the goat is currently pregnant.
Yes.
So there's students who are assigned to watching the animal day and night, you know, while waiting for her to calf or whatever the appropriate term is. What?
Kid.
Kid, thank you. I'm like, I don't know what it is.
One of the, one of the things though that Sarah really liked, I'll speak for her. So there's, they put in for this, they apply with their dogs, the staff, to bring their dogs in to be trained by the kids. So they become like, you know, they're learning to sit, stay, walk through. So when we went in, there were dogs. We were like, what, what is this? But they were dogs that, so they go through the application process, they select specific dogs, they have kennels in the back. And so the kids work with the dogs during their Boag time to train them to, you know, sit, stay, that little, whatever. They were adorable. It was like a corgi, a lab, you know, and they were certainly in the building with them and they were learning during this animal care, yeah.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll groom them for a fee.
So one of the center dogs.
And they're, and they're building an agility course. So the next sort of thing that they're doing within their Boag program for the small animals is building an agility course to do dog training and stuff like. So I think, that's my comment on like, there's a lot of investment around the services that they're offering and listening to the students that we talked to, six students. And just hearing where they're going. So one student wants to go to work at EB as a wilder, another two students were going on to thinking that they're gonna pursue veterinary medicine when they go off to college. So it was just thinking about the different career tracks and offers and, and ways in which, you know, I think we sometimes feel there's students that would like to go to a tech school, but still may need some of the additional support that they can't quite get in tech school and could this be an, an alternative path for them? So I think all in all, it was, it was a great visit. I'm glad we went.
Glad we went too. I did not know that it existed, you know, that. So Jackie did mention after, she has been to our current Boag and she said, you know, that it's a very different scale that the Killingley Boag is, is a much smaller scale compared to what we visited here. You know, it's just in, in different capacities.
So the tech schools that are now in a lottery system, Adam, you know, that means that the, how many kids generally choose tech? Like what's around, what's the approximate number per year?
At all of the tech, it's probably ten, maybe even less.
Apply for them.
They can all apply, but to get in is.
Well, that's what we're, I'm talking about, is that that could be a budget item as well, because it's a lottery. And I know that I spoke to parents from Canterbury who majority, a lot of their kids go and more than seventy-nine percent were not chosen. So this person I know has FOYed and asked for information about how the selection is done, what kind of numbers, does it depend on per town? How, what is your matrix? What is, what is your matrix for this lottery?
Right now, we got thirty in the tech school.
Yeah.
You know, we got a significant, some year.
Bring that information.
And so before.
I'll bring that information to you. I have it, I just didn't send it to you yet, but I will.
And before Jackie, they would always ask us for recommendations. So, you know, our kids always have good recommendations and, you know, but now it's really blind draw.
It's a blind draw.
So you're not getting the feedback, like this kid really would be great for you, but you're missing out on them because you're blind. And I guess that would be the same in every town, right? You're missing out on great kids that, you know, um, but.
It's a, I mean, that means that's gonna bump to a tuition paying student, so I'm gonna, I'll provide that for you.
They keep going with everybody or, and then they pull, they put like a thousand in, kids in that wanna go and then pick three hundred of them.
That's what she's asking.
You know, and.
And we have that.
Two hundred of them could be from Norwich.
So we're.
And another hundred fifty from Westwood.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
That's generally, she's collecting that type of information and finding that out depending on, so we can actually have some kind of framework as to who, who could be selected and not remember, yeah.
One of the, just the, on the tuition for Boag, I think, was it, did they say twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five, but when, when we emailed, the woman had written back, it was about around six.
Yeah, he said, he said the tuition was.
He said it's less now.
Is, is less now, the state lowered it, but, but I think just like it's.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's what he said, right? And then at first I was like, well, no, it's six thousand, which still is cheap.
Yeah.
The Boag program, they'll, you have to think about other things that they might wanna be interested in. Well, they can, they can, so they are fully Ledger High School students. They participate in, they just did the Wizard of Oz, he has kids from Lisbon, wherever, participating in that.
They can do sports, whatever.
So whatever they were offered at Ledger High School, they are Ledger High School student, they just participate.
And that was, I mean, Killingley does the same thing. It's, it's, I get the sense that it's a little bit more like regular ed focused at that particular high school where like, I mean, sounded like there was a nice balance at Ledger between the two, like that you'd feel like you're, you're stuck in, in one part of the school and you won't be able to integrate nicely with the rest of the community at Ledger. But I, it's, it, and it seemed like the people they were even talking to were like, oh, I better go to my AP, you know, file, you know, lit class with, you know, with my regular Ed.
So Killingley is, it's very separate?
I don't, I don't know exactly. We'd have to follow up with Jackie kind of what that feels like, but it's, I think it is a little bit more.
They do block scheduling, so it's one block a day is in the Boag program and the other blocks are their regular ed. And then they, the superintendent was talking to us about how they try to make sure to resolve any of the scheduling conflicts, so that students have the opportunity to take either other electives or other like AP classes or whatever the case is, right? So that they can still, they're not disadvantaged from being in the Boag program and missing out on other opportunities that the school offers.
Yeah, it was nice.
It was.
He did talk a little bit about too, just like Adam, you know, they have a tractor and it's very separate, the grant funding for Boag versus what you're doing for your regular high school. So, you know, when he purchases equipment, if he wants his whole school to use it, he uses it out of his board budget per se, than just the grant, because he wants everybody to have access to, you know, for taking those classes. So it was reassuring that, you know, he's looking out for his collective whole.
No, the Boags won't go into the lottery system like, not that we have anybody going, but like now.
Their process is, they go through an interview, so it's an application, they get an interview process.
Yeah.
I mean, we did meet girls from Lisbon, we met some, we had Preston.
They estimated, what did he say, about thirty to forty percent of the spots in the Boag program are Ledger students currently of the current enrollment, right? And so obviously Ledger students have, are given priority within the program and then the empty seats are through an interview process. So students do have to interview and apply and be accepted, but, yeah. So I think it's a good, I think it's a good option on a couple of different, for a couple of different facts, so.
When we get the bus info.
I think we need that first.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think maybe we'll just say like, then I, I think the next sort of steps and follow-up is the, Kate and I are on the high school choice committee, whatever we call it. And so I think we're gonna schedule another committee meeting and I think come back in May with a formal both presentation and recommendation, I think is sort of the output out of that committee.
I mean, we could always, if people wanted to, if the, the board wanted him to come, cause he said he does go to sending towns and he makes presentations like our normal people do. You know, at some point that could also, you know, happen even after whatever decision.
And we might get more kids going. We really have nobody ever gone to Killingley or Boag. We've had one, one or two over the last eight, ten years, I think maybe that I can think of.
And they haven't enjoyed it and transferred.
And they transferred out, you know, so this sounds like it might be a more.
It'd be conducive to.
A conducive choice for some of them.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll meet again and come back at our next meeting. Thank you, thank you for your efforts in getting there. Okay, so item number five is the superintendent search committee update. The superintendent search committee has met, working with obviously Mayor Broderick, to do the interviewing processes of all the candidates that she put forth. We did a follow-up interview with our finalists and have put forth a candidate. So right now we're just in process of extending kind of the, doing the background checks and, and so forth on a particular candidate and then, and just contracting stuff. But we expect that by next board meeting, we can share that final option and move forward. It's gonna be huge, 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 huge shoes to fill. Definitely a lot of, yes, a, a lot of good, good words shared about Mr. Adam Burrows during this whole process and it's.
People knew you just had good things to say, yeah.
Yeah, they were beating down our doors, saying, we need to come to this amazing school. So kudos to everyone in the building and helping support the building and, and the community we have, because it was, it was definitely a, is, has been very eye-opening in terms of, yeah. But excited to, to share more later. And we can move to new business now. The Kerma update? Oh, sorry.
So we're gonna add at some point that paper that was passed out of a maternity request.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, for, for new business?
To do a motion to add it to the agenda.
Right.
Yeah, cause it wasn't on.
Okay, can, yeah, so in terms for us, before we start into new business, can we make a motion to add in a, a FMLA request?
Motion.
To the.
Second.
There's new business, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, oops, none heard. We'll add that as item number. Eight. Eight, thank you.
We have ten minutes to get through them or two hours.
Oh, I know, I know. I think, I already heard about Kerma, so I think we're updated, right?
Yeah, we're good. Good. Next.
Next.
Adam, do we have any more on Kerma? We, we discussed.
Yeah, we're just doing one year.
Yep, okay, that's it.
And that's the update.
Item number two is grants, REAP, IDEA and school readiness?
There's a couple of motions in there.
IDEA, oh, sorry. IDEA.
If they come our way.
If they come our way.
If they come our way, yeah.
Okay, we have a few motions to listen to and put forth on the table. We need a motion to authorize a superintendent to sign and submit the twenty-five, twenty-six federal REAP grant.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Motion passes. We need a motion to authorize a superintendent to sign and submit the twenty-five, twenty-six IDEA grant.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Unanimous motion passes. Okay, we need a motion to authorize a superintendent to sign and submit the twenty-five, twenty-six local governance partners grant.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? None heard? Motion passes unanimously. All right. So that's it for the grants. We like to do that. The administrative goals, this is a first reading that has been updated. So. We, we can, yeah, I think that, did you?
I get it, I have to make some edits on this.
Yeah, I figured it was.
Yeah.
The administrative ones, yeah.
I'll, I'll make some changes in the notes.
They'll be, they'll be very, I think.
Very minimal, but something that changed just in the course of a year.
Absolutely. And I feel like our, our eyesight and that will be important for, for new, fresh eyes coming in. So we just want to make sure that we're feeling very comfortable with all the readings.
He's on board kind of with where we're at.
Yeah. He has to be. He's not in charge of it this, this go around. But it's a good, it's a good way to get a fresh, you know, snapshot of kind of priorities. So that's good. And then same for BOE goals. I think it was, just to move it to second reading, just have you look it over this. As you want to reminder that we have this year's present goals on the back of the agenda next to the mission statement. So there's been a couple edits, but we can, we can cut away as we need to. It doesn't, some of them don't feel right, so. So item number five is an eighth grade last day and graduation date. That is good stuff. So is that? The ninth? What is, what are we, what are you doing for that?
Their last day would be Friday, the sixth, and their graduation would be the ninth in unit notes, no? Except for one rogue day that we had.
That's early.
No, that doesn't conflict with anybody else's.
No, Jackie had been in contact.
Monday, why would it? How many years do I have to say? I really don't like Monday graduations. I don't, I just don't. On for the record, Kate Boekertlott is not like a Monday graduation.
Were you not a prevent, Kate?
I respect, I respect, I respect the people making these decisions immensely. So I will go with the Mondays, I know it's in the best interests of the children.
And a lot of times that's not high school is like, we're trying to, if they have seven.
Families, I know it's a hot mess. It is a hot mess. So do we have a motion to approve Friday as the last day, June 6th, for eighth graders and to hold the graduation ceremony on Monday, June 9th at 6:00 PM?
Motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion passes.
At 6:00 PM because you know, when the, we've learned, when the sun shines in on us. We can now do 5:30, we have to wait till 6:00, so we blinded on the stairway. So that's why it has to be a thing.
People in stiletto heels trying to walk down it.
We've learned, it's taken us a long time, but we've learned what to do right.
That's great. It's such an exciting time of year. It's really just amazing that another, another eighth grade class is coming through. Okay, so item number six is Learn Regional Technology Solution. I believe that we have teased this a bit, but yeah.
Kate, this is the contract. To take a look at it can be a first reading. And Lance Hagan, who is running the technology services in Learn, he, he wouldn't, he, he would be available, I think, for an online meeting. But as I said before, you know, you know, Preston and North Stonington have a, have a copy of that, so. Did you get it?
Yeah, we have it in our.
We have it.
Learn Regional Technology Solutions.
Oh, I guess this is different.
Yeah, but, you know, and Mike, Mike Critoro and I, we, we talked about this and Mike went over and just double-checked the, you know, double-checked the amount of hours. And this is similar to what Preston has done. But there's a technology coordinator who comes in 52 days a year, technician 133 days, and then there's a reporting services one day a month. But the total plan is for $78,850. And as you know, within the budget proposal, this means that the technology budget would, would go down. It's 240,000 budgeted this year. And this takes it down to 148,000 with the one day a week, you know, person, you know, being in, in the area to, to support some of the other things. And of course, with this, we would still run our technology committee. We would have, Amy would set it up with, you know, somebody that chairs that. And of course, Lauren would probably send somebody out to consult and to do things. But this looks like a good plan and, you know, Mike reviewed it very carefully. And I do have to thank Mike because we made the transition from Jim to Mike and Mike is going back in the classroom. But he has put together things and, and they're in a good stead. So he's still going to be on staff and our techno, our teacher's skills with technology have increased. Also, you could consider this a first reading. The other thing is, would you want somebody to come back in, in May to talk about their services? For a Q and A? You know, that is the big thing, fairly pretty good about this. So if you want to do a second reading and approval at the next board meeting, that would be fine. Or if you have any questions that you would like us to answer, you know, we.
I mean, it's a pretty basic contract, contracted service, right? They're going to provide a service. Somewhere between that amount. And we tried to like scale it back a little because we don't always need somebody all the time, you know? So just to find the right amount for the right price.
What would that library tech person do? What would their tech job be?
So we were, we're going to use that reading integration job description. So that way then it's really filtered more about research within the library. Yes, we're going to do typing, that's a big, big thing there. And, you know, we'll do those pieces. We really want to use our STEM stuff because then we have a lot of STEM grant that is in there. So that just takes time to, you know, we have circuits, we have little robots, we have all those things that we do bring out now. So we just continue with that with kids. We really want to support what's happening in classrooms. So the, you know, the SRP, when they're doing a five-page paper, when they're doing, you know, projects for social studies, those things, really using the library in that way for those upper school kids especially because they need the support to be able to go in and do that kind of stuff. And for our younger kids, it will be modeled like a library and reading classroom. So doing stuff that's based in the science of reading, exploring books, doing book tastings, doing all those kinds of things that.
Book tasting?
Yeah, I love those. Is, you know, when you're, when that's your forte, that's, you know, something that.
Yeah, but the other thing that we're working, should I pass this out, the summary, or I'll leave it for future? You know, we have a job description that we need to update for the tech. But the other sidebar is that, you know, if we're transferring a teacher in there, we need to replace the teacher because, and we have to start that interviewing and hiring process as soon as possible because the hiring process that we use utilizes a team of teachers. They invite candidates in, they watch them teach a lesson. There's a whole group of people and that's very difficult to bring people back in the summertime. So we have, you know, April, May and June, basically May and June to complete that project. And hopefully by June, we might have a finalist that Amy and I could recommend to the board.
So just one more question, Amy. Teacher support. Who supports the teach? I realize many of our older teachers are retiring and the younger ones are more tech savvy. But who supports what we have as we bring in new programs, things like that? Who would be?
So Lauren would, would do that for us? Yep, so they would do that for us, especially with that coordinator here that's coming in, right?
That person would be like doing that.
And we might say like, we're getting, you know, whatever, five new smart boards that are different from what we have. Can you provide us training on those or find the training and get that training?
Okay.
And, and Mike is still here.
Yeah.
Not that he would be doing that, but he's still here to kind of oversee that. He might run the tech committee still.
Yeah, he's not going to say no. I'm not.
He won't say no, no.
But, you know, just so we're not dumping on him.
Exactly. When he has a full.
When he has a new job he's getting into and stuff. Yeah, it was who was going to train the teachers.
Yep.
And we do have younger ones now, so it's not.
The young ones probably could teach the rest of them.
Yeah.
Probably some of the kids do.
I was placed on the tech committee because I would ask the question at the hospital because I would ask the questions that they wanted asked, that other people would just think were obvious and I wouldn't think they were obvious in the thing, you know? As we get younger and younger teachers.
They're just so natural.
They don't ask that, those things.
I think, yeah, I think it's good that, that I feel confident that Mike is, has been in part of this process and he knows what to, you know, what they're going to expect and anticipate for this. I, I feel very confident that that's.
I do anticipate people will still call him. It's like having somebody that you're like, oh, can you just help me? You know, I anticipate that.
What one do I click for?
Maybe full algebra, algebra two, pre-algebra all day long. No, I, I, I think we'll, yeah, we'll save it for the second, you know, just read into it a little bit, see the materials. But I think, I think that's a great option considering that we're not, you know, hiring a specific or like an outsourced company that's just only, Lauren, I, I feel confident has, has other.
And other school districts we know and, and respect to use them. So it's not like we're getting somebody rogue.
Exactly. Yep. Well, thank you for that update as well. Okay. So item number seven, there are job descrip, job description updates for classified staff. So that's, well, yeah. We'll make a motion to push that to executive session.
Second.
I'll agree.
There's going to be individual invitations to classify. We're not bringing them all in together because the contracts and the job descriptions are very different. And these are the people that are the backbone of the school district because they're year-round employees. And so, you know, it would have to be a motion to invite in separately. It would be Crystal, maybe Ann, Brian and then Darlena to come in and to talk about their job descriptions and some of the things that they're looking at because each position is so unique. And it would be good for the board, you know, to review this with planning, okay?
Absolutely, yeah. So we'll do that when we're going into executive session. So that's fine. But yeah, so then we have our, item number eight newly added is the, the letter that we received.
Oh, yes, the letter, yeah.
About FMLA leave. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, June. Okay, I think you all need to, you need this. Oh my God, am I holding the letters? I think I am.
We have the document, the, the board is officially voting to give Emily Nelson a leave of absence, you know, based on, you know, maternity leave. And it's important that she have this record because that documents her, you know, experience and working. And she would use this motion, you know, in the future to make sure she's documenting her work record.
Absolutely.
Motion.
Motion to accept the request for FMLA leave.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Emily. Okay. So that concludes our new business items. We have our regularly scheduled update is May 8th here. And then there is also a special meeting, May 22nd. So if you can add that to your calendar. On May 22nd? Okay.
Your birthday? 25 again.
I feel like it's.
22nd.
I guess it's specifically, I mean, transportation is one of the.
It is the transportation.
Transportation, yes, we're going to.
Unless we're going to just, yeah, if we need to add anything else. But that's what we're, the point of it.
I would say 6:00.
Maybe 7?
I would think it would be hard, I would think it would be hard to add a high school discussion to it because we need to hear the information first. I don't know. To make a decision, we need to hear.
We don't have anybody going this year to BOAG.
Yeah, we're not going to do, we're not going to combine it.
We don't need to get it done.
We don't need to, right.
It's not a forming issue that we got to get done. Maybe like transportation.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you guys.
Everyone, yeah, a motion to. April vacation likewise. So we need a motion to invite the superintendent into the, or can do two motions or does it matter both? I think the superintendent into the executive session.
Motion.
Second.[1769.23]